Jefferson County Post is happy to welcome Jefferson County Commission Chairman Jim Carmichael. He has just been reinstated for another term as chair. And before we do that, though, we want to give a shout out to our sponsors for this video. Good Old Boys Golf Carts at 434 Tennessee Highway 92 in Dandridge, Tennessee for all your golf cart needs. And Dr. Warren Stinson at 113 East Broadway Boulevard in Jefferson City for all your dental needs. Thank you to our sponsors. Welcome Commissioner Chairman. I'm going to get your chairman again. This is, how many, how many times have you been chairman? You've had several.
I was the chairman three years from 14 to 17. And Robert Tucker took over one year before Mark Potts took over for four years. And then I finished the last two years of Marks now.
And so you were, yes. So you have had several years. This is not your first rodeo.
Several years. Good to be here.
So September marked our new reelect officers, correct? On the county commission. Who are the sitting officers for this?
The sitting officers now is, I come back in as chairman, co-chair is chairman pro temp would be Sam Solomon, Sammy Solomon. And the, the-
Parliamentarian?
Parliamentarian is Jim Snodgrass. And then you've got the-
Chaplain?
The chaplain is Joe Coleman.
Okay. So pretty much, and those were pretty much what last-
Ah, nothing changed.
Nothing changed?
Nothing changed.
Okay. So, and in September, a lot of, it starts a new quarter. A lot of decisions are made. Right now you all are having monthly meetings, correct? And you're looking to add a work session back in, correct?
Sure. Well, you know, we went to this new format because previously Terry Dockery, you know, made a motion to change it. We did have it only a voting meeting. And I'm seeing that having only the voting meeting, that there's the packets and the amount of questions that comes in, we really need to have a work session. We're looking at maybe changing back. We're going to, we're going to look into having some different type schedules for county commission. And we may actually have a work session one month and a voting session the next month. Some plans we're looking at.
So maybe something happening every month, but not always a voting meeting.
Not always a voting meeting.
Okay. So, and that's on your agenda for October or is that?
Sure.
Okay. So that's something to look forward, to look, to keeping up with. So we've been doing this, this kind of myths and questions and answering some myths, social internet myths. And we've been kind of following along that vein. And we're going to do a little bit of that today. And we're also going to talk about some of the, I guess, the highlights of what went on at this first quarterly meeting of this fiscal year, or yeah, of this fiscal year. So for those people who don't know, fiscal year for the county is not like your fiscal year where it starts in January. It starts July the 1st. And so they are very early in their fiscal year. And actually, it's not until about this time that you all know any kind of monies that have rolled over-
Sure.
From the last time. And you did have a significant rollover.
Yes. Yes, we did have a good rollover this year. Sales tax came in very well for the county. We really didn't see that coming because we always, we always budget very conservatively. And it really made me feel good to see the rollover we got. The schools made out like a bandit.
Yeah, they got what, nine?
They had a little over nine million.
Yeah. And then you guys ended up with what, a little over three?
Just a shade at, just right, might as well say $3 million.
About $3 million.
And you know, that, that is a really good number considering how tight we were.
Right.
So that's going to help tremendously.
Yes. And for people who are going to say, and this is one of the myths, people believe that if there's any rollover, that that means that it's extra. And so what you're saying is that when you budget, you have to project sales tax for the year.
Sure.
And that is truly just a projection. Nobody really knows. And what happens if you come in under your projection?
Well, when we come in, I don't know that we have ever, we have gotten close to coming in right at projection. But you know, we've always had a little left because we always build into our budget. But you never know, the price of fuel can spike, electricity cost, and you know-
Insurance costs have eaten you all up in the past, yes.
We are growing in such leaps and bounds that every number we deal with, it's just, it's climbing every year.
And with this economy, I would think that it has been challenging to project sales tax because, you know-
Well, it's, it's very tough. And I call, you know, part of our sales tax in Jefferson County, I call it foreign money. And the reason I call it foreign money is the people that spend the money in this county ain't from here.
Right.
So you know, we, we got, we got a lot of tourist stuff going on. We got a lot of pass through traffic going on. And you know, every time that you've got something going on, the interstate and shut the interstate down, Dandridge, White Pine, Jefferson City, you just doubled your population. And you know, them people are going to stop and buy something.
Oh, yeah. And that, and that is a very important point that you made. I understand that your tourism taxes, your hotel motel tax and all that, you have definitive ways that you can spend that money.
Sure.
And it's a very narrow path.
Well-
However, it has bleed over effect into your sales tax dollars, which-
Sure does.
Don't have those same caveats about how you can spend that money.
Sure.
So, you know, there's a benefit to it.
You know, with sales tax money here, a while back, we went in and took a little bit of the sales tax back to the county. But you know, when the, the schools gets the lion's share of the sales tax.
Right.
And you know, they get, they get the biggest amount of it. And when you, when you start correlating all that into the path of it, just like the hotel motel tax, you know, we're setting on a pretty good sum of money.
Right.
You know, we're having to split some money up and change it because we questioned it and found out we'd put it in the wrong place. So you know, we're getting some different issues worked out, but that money can only be spent for entertainment or development.
Tourism or economic development?
And you know, when you speak of economic development, you know, you could help any kind of business come in here. You can buy land with that money. There's a lot of different things that you can do with that money, but you're in a very narrow window.
Yeah.
You know, they want you to be investing in the infrastructure to do something nice. That's the whole idea. Because to me, we're back to that foreign money.
Right.
You know, local people don't, they may stay in a motel every once in a while if their wife throws them out, but you know, it's all still out of town money.
And, and that is a very important reason that you reinvest in your tourism funds and your economic development funds. And that, that brings us to what is a really hot topic right now, which has been the landfill. We have had in Jefferson County an ongoing audit funding in our landfill for many, many, and I'm talking about a decade of years.
Sale closures.
Yeah. And, and then now we have an additional issue that kind of involves that Moore farm that was up for purchase, which I understand has been pulled from the market now?
Yes, it has been pulled from the market. We've kind of missed our opportunity.
So that is off of the table. However, can you explain kind of what's going on out there regarding proximity and some things?
Well, what we're into right now is, is we, we've done a lot of construction work out there. And we're in the middle of water drainage, solving some problems with it, retainage water systems. And you know, this, this system has encroached on that land that we were discussing about buying. It did encroach on it. And you know, we had to seek easements. And you know, we're right now working through the process because we're out of permit. And TDEC come to our last meeting, done a really great job of explaining what all is being done, the marks that you need to hit. And you know, right now, we're probably, I think Eric Lawrence has got the best report with TDEC that we've had in a lot of years.
So we have encro- so, and for people who are, I'll be honest with you, landfill situations are not my forte. I mean, I'm not, that's not my strong suit when I'm discussing something. So the way I understand it is that we have encroached on the Moore property. We were supposed to be a certain distance with some of the things that we've developed there.
Right.
And we did not do that correctly. So we're going to have, there's going to have to be some sort of restitution in some way, I would think.
Well-
To fix that issue.
We currently have an easement signed. And I've not been privy to that information because the landfill has its own oversight board.
Right.
And you know, they got some really good guys on that board. And you know, we got a new superintendent of the landfill.
Right.
And Eric has really hit the ground running. He's actually impressed me with the job he's doing. He's had to learn a whole lot in a very short time because he wasn't a landfill guy. But he's, he's proved to all of us that hard work and diligence and you can get there. So you know, they're, they're getting their problems fixed. We had water to retainage ditches that the water ran the wrong way. So you know, we got some problems we got to work out with engineering, but there's just a, a lot of steps that need to be done to get where we need to be.
So the Moore property in particular has been a topic on social media that has just been, been really talked about and, and I think probably blown out beyond what actually was going on.
Right.
So this park property was offered for sale. And I think it was $1.7 million was, was the amount that they were looking for. But this is also the property that was encroached upon, correct?
Sure. It's one in the same.
And to my knowledge, the Moores have not pushed that issue-
No.
At this point. Is that correct?
No. When it was, when I actually introduced this to the county commission, you know, the, the commissioners were more concerned with who brought it to them and, and why it is rather than what it is. And you know, I would like to tell the people that any time that something is offered to the county, you should at least have the common decency to listen to what the people are talking about.
So as you said, it was presented, the Moore property was presented. But there wasn't a whole lot of discussion about this encroachment.
No.
Now, when, when you brought this property, when it was brought to you and you brought it to the people, were you aware that there was an encroachment?
Nope.
So now that we know that there is an encroachment, would, of course, this property's now off the market.
Well-
But would that have made a difference, do you think, to some of those commissioners? Had they not taken a hard pass to start with until this information came out?
Well, they, the thing about this whole deal was John Neil Scarlett started investigating before he passed away, this land. And it was brought up to him that it had been offered to the landfill a year before.
Oh, okay.
And the landfill and the gentleman that used to run it had never told the mayor or myself or anybody that it was offered. I did not hear of it. And you know, when Rick Moore contacted me and said, you know, since you're all not interested, and I'm like, whoa, wait a minute, you know? I said, we're not, never not interested in land if it's offered to the county. And the mayor and I actually planned a meeting with them to hear what they wanted to do. And you know, that's when we learned that the, that the land, that they was asking a million seven fifty for 86 acres. And some of it is really pretty farmland and there's outcroppings of it that's not as nice, but it's still available to do something with. And it falls between, you know, two thoroughfares in the community. So you know, the, the county should even look at it if they had nothing to do with an encroachment.
Right. So is it common? Relatively common. But the county gets interest, offers, or people looking for interest in purchasing the property. In other words, this is not unique to the Moore property?
No.
This happens occasionally.
It happens.
When there's large swatches of land to be sold. So if there's not a developer sitting chomping their bed at it, then they, they look at another avenue.
See, here about two years ago, there was land right here in the city limits of Dandridge offered to the county.
Right. So that's always something that the county tries to take a look at.
Sure.
In other words, so on social media, it has been stated more than one time that it was because the property belonged to the Moores and because Rick Moore had previously filled in a partial term on the county commission. And so they were considering it to be, for lack of a better term, and I think this is the term that was used, home cooking. Is that in any way true?
No. I would have to debunk the whole situation. There was too many Monday morning quarterbacks trying to handle the ball. You know, this was a simple deal. There was nothing complicated about it. You know, Joe Moore come right in this very room, him and Rick sat down and talked to me and the mayor, told us what they wanted for it. And you know, the orchestrated show that went on in the meeting, the attack on me for even suggesting it, that they want to know where this originated from and everything that was brought up, you know, to that is, how else can you tell somebody the information but just say it? And you know, it has to be in an open meeting. The county, we can't, we can't negotiate. There's no one person has the power to negotiate land purchase in Jefferson County. All you can do is listen. Let them price it just like the building here in downtown Dandridge. You know, the man said what he would give. We voted no. Thank you for coming along and playing with us. But you know, just like behind the Malone property, you know, when you're, when you're looking at something like that, and you know, with me, I supported it. And you know, I know Rick Moore, or me and him big chums, no. I know his, I know his father and have known him a lot of years. And I mean, he's, he's a real nice guy. He's a respectful guy. You know, he, he worked with him on the easement. And you know, what kind of caught me off guard about the whole deal was not one person in the whole meeting asked for the appraisals. We had two appraisals and when it was brought up for conversation, it was shut down as tabling the idea of the land. It was tabled. And when you table it, that's where you send something to die. So there was no real conversation. And then it was brought to me was, well, why didn't you tell us anything? You tabled it as soon as we started talking.
So in other words, what you're saying is that you were not the proponent of it nor the cheerleader of it?
No.
You were simply the vessel with which it was brought.
I was merely, me and the mayor sat in and listened to the conversation with them. We heard their side of it. They had appraisal done. We had an appraisal done.
How did those appraisals turn out?
The appraisal on our side was a million two, just a little over a million two. Their appraisal come right in on the number, a million seven fifty.
So I'm going to ask a question because as I said, this is not my, this is not my area. But would the fact that we had encroached on their property and they do hold, we have to have an easement right now, would that not make that property slightly more valuable to them with us?
Well, sure. I mean, we're in Jefferson County. I mean, anytime land joins county-owned property that could ever be used for expansion or anything, you know, you need to take a hard look, just like our school system. If there's land joining one of our schools, you know, the school board should take a hard look at it.
Right.
And you know, you should look at it with an open mind as that, that's an investment in the Jefferson County's future.
Right.
Now, here's the thing about this, you know, you're talking about your short-term rentals. We're talking about the hotel motel tax.
Right.
That money could have been spent for that.
Right.
You're sitting, that is not taxpayer money. That's not on the tax rate.
Right.
That is money that is considered to me foreign money that would have bought that land. You know, anytime that we can buy something that's good for Jefferson Canyons, if we went over there and built a place to have an event center that would bring tax dollars into this county, they could have concerts, they could have ballgames, they could have anything there. That would be putting money into our coffers to where we wouldn't have to be going after property tax every year to pay our bills. We need an outside income with that money.
So now where we sit, something's going to have to be, some question is going to have to be answered-
Sure.
Regarding, and that is probably going to cost money. But nobody knows right now what it's going to be.
There's no way to say.
Right.
You know, we're in that position that it's no longer available. They wanted to sell the land, I believe, I was told by someone that they had their eyes on property down close to where they live. And now that property's no longer available, so they're no longer-
There's no motivation.
You know, they, they fielded a lot of phone calls, didn't appreciate the way people talked to them. And I don't blame them. They didn't get a warm reception. They, they came to the county as citizens, wanted to offer something, and very few was receptive at all to even talking to them. Not one person anywhere had anything to say to the man and his son. And I mean, if you like them or not, that's beside the point. They're still citizens of Jefferson County.
Right.
And you know, I just felt like they deserved to be treated better. They, they should have had the benefit of a doubt. And if you don't like them for whatever reason, take personal politics out of it and be a man, you know? Show up and let's conduct business. And if we were not interested, all you got to do, I believe I said it in the meeting is, if you're not interested in this land, just say so. You don't have to have the rhetoric.
Right.
It's easy. Yes or no. You don't, you don't have to be hard.
So now you mentioned short-term rentals.
Sure.
So short-term rentals have been a hot topic in Jefferson County.
Sure has.
Particularly, so there is a thought process that, and it has been touted in social media, that short-term rentals are the save all of the budget of Jefferson County. That they are going, that the revenue generated by short-term rentals is going to keep for having a property tax increase for untold numbers of years. Is that true?
That's still yet to be determined. The county is going to make some money off of it. Is it going to be millions of dollars? No, I'm not a believer. It'll be like everything else that anytime the government steps in, there'll have to be adjustments. And we don't want to crush the business. You know, you can have over extrinsic rules. And you know, we, we have brought forth twice that it's passed legal and it was pulled the other Friday night right before the meeting because we had discovered that it had deeper problems.
So on the state level, the state has been coming down pretty solidly on the side of the short-term rental owners.
Sure.
And they have made it fairly clear that they are going to continue to do that. Short-term rentals in, and as we talked about earlier, the short-term rentals do, while that hotel motel tax would go up and you would have short-term, some short-term-
And there will be zone commercials, so their taxes-
So their property tax is going to go up some, but it's like the difference in, what, it's like 40, I can't remember what the exact points are.
A, a normal resident is taxed on 20%.
And-
And commercial is 40.
Yeah. So it's about 40%. So, but then there could be an offset to the sales tax because if prices go up and they are not, we are not pigeon forage. We are not-
Exactly.
We are not gallinburg. So you're looking for a particular kind of renter who's going to want to come vacation in Jefferson County. So if that is not the case, then it is possible that there could be an offset in sales tax if, if those rentals stagnate.
It is entirely possible. I wouldn't rule it out. But I'm going to say that we're way too early in this game to start counting chickens-
Right.
Because we ain't, we ain't started hatching yet.
Right.
And you know, we got to get past these legal hurdles and get where we need to be. Our document is 17 pages long and you mentioned pigeon forage. Yours is four pages.
Well, there's a difference there, isn't there?
So you know, there's too big a difference and they some overregulation and I mean, they, they some bumps to work out.
So you know, as you mentioned, it was pulled from this meeting. So right now it's sitting kind of in limbo. And you know, we talked about the fact that the state has, before we've talked about it as well, that the state is, it's kind of coming down on the side of the, of the owners of short-term rentals.
It sure is. It sure is.
So tell me, tell me what, what is going on in Jefferson County right, I mean, what are you looking at as issues that is going on with this piece of?
The biggest issues that we're having right now is how we treat the businesses that are already started. Who is quote grandfathered? And that, that is one of the biggest issues. And we got to look at doing inspections, you know, we're going to have to hire an inspector. So if, if we have a 17-page document that one of our largest developers, developers come to us and says, look, how could you build a building by what you've wrote? And you know, I met with him, looked at what he had, and I said, I think I'm going to be in agreement with you. You know, you can overregulate, which is normally what government does when they go from no regulations to all kinds of regulations. But in the turnaround, the state of Tennessee stepped in and said, you cannot treat an Airbnb home as anything but a residential dwelling. You can't treat it as a commercial business. And, and they stepped it up and said, this is how it is. So what we have to do is pull back in the documentation. And you know, you know, our major concerns was drain fields, being able to hold capacity, parking, you know, emergency services, you know, there was a lot of the inspecting inside this document that the liability insurance of the person that owns the home should be the one inspecting. Like my commercial building, you know, Kansas Todd Fire Department's never come to my shop and said, Jim, you need to put up fire protection, you need to do this or that. They've never said that. But my insurance company did. You know, my insurance companies, I have to be recertified every year.
Right.
And you know, that's where we don't need to be redundant. It don't need to be to where neighbors can beat each other over the head with rules and regulations. That's why Jefferson County has never passed a meaningful noise law. Because it is, no matter what you pass, somebody is going to try to clobber their neighbor in the head with it that don't like it. And you've got people that's moved into Jefferson County from everywhere. Some people are used to the noise and don't think nothing of it. And others don't want to see the porch light on at night. They want it to be complete darkness. So you've got a mix of these people and us being a melting pot now that we've never been, it's carrying over into how we act and how Jefferson County is. I've never seen it more prevalent than it is right now because you've got all these people coming in and leaving. So you're dealing with a different demographic.
Yeah. The demographics are definitely different in Jefferson County right now. And I'm, I'm sure that this, this particular issue, I think, I think in some ways it has been overstated and understated. I think there's a lot of people who believe that this is the end all and be all and it's going to solve every financial problem that Jefferson County has, just like they think a mineral tax is going to solve every financial problem that Jefferson County has. You know, and then, and then you have people who don't really care what their neighbors are doing. They, they, it's more of a live and let live kind of situation. And then you have people who have truly been impacted by some of the-
Sure, sure.
Some of the situations where you have maybe owners who are not as present as they should be.
Sure.
You know, so, so what we're thinking here is that this is going to take a while. Is this, is this where we are with this?
You know, for everybody that's been in a fire truck emergency hurry to get this passed, I would druther it take, I figured it would take up to a year to pass this. I would druther have a really good document that took a while, that passed muster, that everybody felt confident in, as to hurtily put something together and have to keep altering it and changing it. Because you're, you're talking about how people do their livelihood. I believe there's one lady come to one of the meetings and she owns like eight or 10 -
Right.
Airbnb's. So anything that we do is going to affect how she can conduct her business. And it's coming, we're coming in after the fact. I'll always be a business person at heart, being raised in a family business. And you know, we don't want to hurt that business.
No.
But we don't want that business to hurt us. So there's got to be common sense used and practicality to get where we need to be.
Do you feel like that, that this is going to have wings sometime in this next fiscal year?
I think that we'll get it done this fall.
Okay.
I think we'll have a good document from what I've read of it and for the altercations that I've seen, I think the problems are going to be worked out.
So how many legal challenges do you think you're going to have to face over this? Because you know that anytime in, the legal bills pile up in Jefferson County. You all spend a, a lot of money defending legislation and defending.
Considering where my budget started my first year as chairman in fourteen, you know, we've done past that three times. And you know, the more complicated everything gets, the more complicated the answers are.
Right.
So, you know, everything costs money now. The, the days of getting by cheap are over.
Mm-hmm.
You know, our labor bill along in the county is what's the driving force of, of everything.
Mm-hmm.
You know, it, it's our biggest expense.
Sure.
You know, a lot of people think, "Well, a million seven for eighty-six acres of land, that's a lot of money." Stop and look at what we spend in payroll a week.
Yeah.
You know, the payroll taxes alone is just astronomical number.
It is shocking sometimes when you look at the budget, at, at where the money actually goes. And the truth is, there is, I, I keep hearing about a DOGE audit. This has been an ongoing thing, we've talked about it a couple of times. People keep calling for a DOGE audit. First of all, I'm not sure that they know what a DOGE audit is. Um, and, and that, and that, we have a centralized finance office.
Sure. We have the activated one, which really brings everything out, but a DOGE audit, what a DOGE audit is, is it is a scientific audit of the computer that your information's in. So, therefore, it compares the numbers, is what it actually does.
Well, it goes by department, and department too, and the departments don't handle the wrong money, so.
That's exactly right.
You know, and I know, um, that the day, uh, one day I called the finance office to get some clarification on something, and it was right after I had read online that somebody was looking for a DOGE audit, and state auditors were in the finance office, and they're there very often. It's not an uncommon thing to find a state auditor.
Actually, we get audited every month.
Right.
We, we are in some form being audited all the time.
Right.
You know, our finance director has to go to Nashville all the time, her employees have to go for schooling. It's an ongoing process now. And see, we're, we're a small county, and we're having growing pains moving into the future, because you know, we even have commissioners that got something they wanna do, but being able to change that as legislators, you know, a lot of, a lot of county commissioners don't realize they're legislators. They're just like a senator.
Mm-hmm.
You know, you don't control what department heads do, all you can do is call them on the carpet when it don't fit.
Right.
When you do a budget. And you know, I caution everybody on the budget, you can't learn the budget while we're doing budget. You gotta live the budget every month. You gotta see what's trending. And that's where you learn. By January, we will see, we'll be six months into this year, and we'll see where all the numbers are gonna be. The next two months is very critical.
Right. And so, another thing, cause right now we're, we're busting some myths and answering some questions in this part about things that we find on social media over and over again. So, one of the things that we see on social media is, uh, still the wheel tax. It's been a hot topic for a couple of years. And it's still a hot topic, and now they're saying they, that, you know, it's going to referendum and it needs to be defeated. So, now, first tell us about it going to referendum, when that happens, and which one we're talking about.
Well, that will be in the midterm election, which will be in twenty-eight. And as it passed, that it'll have to go to a referendum, and the people will get to vote on it. And you know, what I will caution them is, when you spread the debt out to automobiles instead of houses and property, you, you're, you're totally spreading different, if you're putting mayonnaise on bread, you're spreading it a lot thinner.
Mm-hmm.
Because, you know, most people don't realize, when, when you drive around your neighborhood at night, and you see eight or nine cars, cars sitting at your neighbor's house, does all them live there every night? One person is paying property tax there, but there's eight cars.
Right.
And it makes a big difference in this county when you start counting license plates.
So, now, I'm gonna ask you a personal question, you don't have to answer it if you don't want to, but I, I think that you will. How many vehicles do you pay wheel tax on?
Eleven.
Eleven. So, it has been mentioned on social media that we need to cap it at two or three vehicles. In other words, if you, if you own more than two or three, then you don't have to pay the wheel tax. What do you think about that?
Well, I don't think that you can do that. We got into that with indigent people in paying property tax. And you know, for the average age of the people that live in Jefferson County, you're talking about an older group.
Mm-hmm.
And you know, I would a lot druther pay the wheel tax. And you know, I have my reasons behind that, because it's a tax that fits to everybody. And you know, at one time, I had two stepsons, and both of them drove. We had wheel tax stickers on everything, so there was a lot more of them at my house.
Mm-hmm.
And you know, I just got through buying a license plate for my road tractor that I move my equipment with, and, uh, you know, by the time I registered that truck and buy all my permits, you know, I'm up about five thousand dollars with one truck.
Right.
So, that, that thirty-five dollars and that twenty-five dollar wheel tax don't seem like much to pay my part, because I'm using the same roads. Wait till you pay heavy vehicle tax, then you pay FET tax, and then you pay all the other taxes.
I just wanted to bring that up, because, um, you and many other people who are sitting county commissioners have businesses that they, they drive multiple, they have multiple wheel taxes.
Sure.
And so, it's, it's sort of, uh, they definitely have a dog in the fight.
Sure, sure.
Let's put it that way. So, you know, I, and that's, and that's coming up.
Their idea is to save every dollar they can, and we need to survive.
So, for those people who are really still very upset about wheel tax, twenty-eight is your year. So, uh, now let's move on, and let's talk about something that kind of goes hand-in-hand with that. One of the big things that is going on right now on some social media sites is that people are wanting to go back to paper ballots. And yes, I actually said that. They are wanting to go back to paper ballots. Apparently, there's a group of people who do not remember what a hanging chad is, or have never sat in an election office and waited for results to come in. And this, these are on, uh, machines.
Right.
And they are wanting to go back to, like I said, to paper ballots. So, I called the election commission, because, uh, they're wanting to get a petition together. And I'm not sure who they're gonna turn that petition into, but I'm thinking it's probably you. So, so, does the Jefferson County Commission have anything to do with paper ballots?
No, we do not.
Not a thing?
We have no purview, because that's all regulated by the state.
Every bit of business.
Your state election commission takes care of all of that, so, you know, that's just another thing, that I have legislators on the commission that say, "Hey, you know, we need to do something about this or that." And I'm like, "It's not our purview."
Yes.
You know, you gotta learn your place in the legislative, how it works, the machine.
So, I want to, I wanna make it clear, because Chairman Carmichael has said that they don't have anything to do with it. I did call the election commission, I asked the question, and I was told that there is nothing that, that Jefferson County per se can do, um, about paper ballots. That, that is a decision that is made on the state level. Everybody, uh, adheres to what the state determines that we're going to do. They also noted that if you're looking for election results in any kind of timely manner, that paper ballots would not be the way that you would want to go, because it would take an enormous amount of time. Also, that Jefferson County, and it is not just unique to Jefferson County, the state of Tennessee's election machines are not interfaced with the internet. They do not have anything to do, you cannot reach the election machines.
That is exactly correct.
Now, that is not the truth in every state. So, some people who are coming here from other states, and they're used to that happening, that is, that could be an issue in another, but in the state of Tennessee.
But you know, on the national level, you can actually watch it on the internet.
Yes.
There's people that actually watch as election results come in on the internet.
Yes.
They actually do that.
Yes, real time.
And, and. And if they can watch it, they can outdo it.
So, you know, but in the state of Tennessee, that is not possible.
That is not possible.
And it is not possible in any county in the state of Tennessee. So, uh, and also, the, the, uh, it was, it was discussed that right now, if you do not bring the proper notification, or the proper identifications in when you vote, you can fill out something called a provisional ballot. As far as, uh, petitions and, and, yeah, there's all kind, there's always somebody wanting to start a petition for something. But we tried to debunk a few things that are going on, and, and there's a, a question that I have to ask you before, uh, before we go. And, um, that's about District Eight. Terry Dockry, who has been a longtime commissioner representing District Eight, and, and I would, from my cheap seat where I sit, I would consider Dockry to be a moderate conservative.
Sure.
I have seen him vote by himself, because he just did not believe in something that was going on. And I have seen him vote, uh, both sides of the proverbial fence, you know, depending on what the, the item is. And, and it is a loss for the county commission, because.
It's a very big loss.
He, he is, he is very, he has always represented his district to the best of his ability, in my opinion.
Sure.
Um, and so, Dockry has resigned, um, not because he wanted to resign, but, but for personal reasons that just could not be avoided. And, um, he suggested, he wrote a letter in his resignation letter, he wanted, uh, Henry as his replacement for the period from September through May, will actually be through August, so, because you'll have to go to the general table.
His last day will be September the thirtieth. No, it'll be August the thirtieth. Cause September the first is when we get sworn in.
Right. So, whoever goes into this position. And there was quite a brouhaha to call it anything different this last time, um, regarding that position in District Eight. And the county commission, for the interest of people who do not know, the county commission could not come to a consensus. It requires eleven votes.
Sure.
Eleven votes. And the, and it was almost evenly split. Uh, there was a group of commissioners who put up, uh, Jim Fox, who has, and now, who had already announced his candidacy for District Eight.
Sure.
And then, I understand that Henry announced his candidacy that evening when he was allowed to speak.
That evening.
Okay, so both of those men or gentlemen are seeking, um, are seeking the, a seat in District Eight. And then, of course, I think, I'm not sure what the incumbent, if he's announced that he, uh, Coleman has decided whether he's running or not, I don't know.
Right.
But both of those people have come out. But right now, because there is no, there was no consensus, District Eight is underrepresented. Is that correct?
Sure. And you know, Ronnie Coleman come in and read the letter from Terry Dockry. You know, me and Terry Dockry's been friends ever since school days, I mean, I have the utmost respect for the man. And you know, you had people stand up and talk for him, and you know, and then they, in the meeting, later on, they decided that, you know, they wanted Jim Fox instead. You know, you praise the man one moment, you don't the next. And you know that me as chairman, sitting there watching this play out, you know, for, for the circumstances behind Terry Dockry having to leave the commission, he's no longer able to attend. And you know, you know, I really hate that for him. And you know, I'm, I'm the type of person that I will stick to tradition. And you know, tradition always comes from the person, the other person from that district.
Right.
The other elected official. And, and in this case, Terry Dockry asked that we nominate and elect W.D. Henry.
How did Coleman vote? Who is the other, the other, uh?
Coleman nominated W.D. Henry and voted for him.
So, he is the other sitting, for those who do not know, he is the other sitting and, and is still sitting, commissioner from District Eight. So, what happens, because right now, we've never, in my recollection, in many, many years, I'm sure it's happened, but always before, we've had commissioners before who for health reasons could not show up.
Sure.
But they had not resigned yet. And as soon as they resigned, the, the situation was filled and, and, and the districts. So, now, you're looking at another vote in October?
Sure. Well, what happened was, is this was postponed. This vote was postponed to the next meeting, cause we voted twice.
Right.
Now, Jim Fox got the ten votes.
Did he get to ten?
He got to ten. And you know, we could've kept voting. In the past, I mean, it's just like Mr. Frank Herndon told me when his grandfather ran, they had five votes to pass him. And you know, just like when, uh, Aaron Lowery took over John Neal's position, Randy Bales come in and nominated Aaron Lowery.
Uh-huh.
Lloyd, I'm sorry.
Oh, Lloyd.
I said that wrong, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I keep wanting to call him a Lowery when he's a Lloyd, but forgive me for that, Aaron. But, you know, and we one hundred percent replaced John Neal at his death with Aaron.
Right.
And you know, this is the same situation, that, you know, we always respect what the people's opinions are from that district. And you know, I won't, as a county commissioner, I won't get involved in another man's district if, if his partner comes and says, "Look, he would like this guy to succeed him, I'm supporting this guy, I'm gonna respect that commissioner's wishes." I'm not gonna cross that. I'm, I'm just not gonna cross that line. And you know, I've been asked the question by various people, and you know, I wouldn't wanna win an election that way.
Right.
I wouldn't wanna win an election against a disabled man with commissioners that's not from your district voting. I'm not gonna do that. You know, I, I'm all about property owners' rights, and I'm all about treating the people right and their representatives from their district. And, and you know, I'm, I'll, I'll stand my ground there. Everybody that called and talked to me and wanted to talk to me about my support for Terry, you know, I will always support Terry and his wishes. I'm not gonna vary. But you know, you're interjecting politics into a sick man's world. And out of respect for that man, I mean, hey, he, he talked to me a lot about being chairman and helped me a lot being chairman. And, and you know, I just have the utmost respect for him. But I'm not gonna praise him one moment and vote against him the next.
So, this is gonna come up in October, you're gonna have to bring it again.
Sure.
What are the chances of hitting eleven votes for somebody?
Uh, there'll be eleven votes.
You think?
I, I'm, I'm pretty sure of it. I think the consensus will, is, is gonna just one way or the other. Because in the next meeting, I'll, I probably won't accept another postponement.
Right.
You know, that we're gonna keep voting till something happens.
Because District Eight is.
You gotta have support, because right now, the commission is not split down the middle, but it's three or four votes from it.
Right.
You know, just like my reelection as the chairman, I had eleven votes, Jim Snodgrass had six.
Right.
There's sixteen people present. You know, me, I would like to have a meeting that everybody's there. But you know, when you got people sick, you got people out, you got people that are no longer there, you know, you're, you're short people.
Right.
And we would like to, we, we would like to get everybody there in the meeting and have a full vote. And that's what I'm shooting for in October. And we got to bridge across this, that, you know, we, we have people that getting all caught up into campaigning, cause this is an election cycle year.
Right.
This is all of us's last year on here, and I will have been here sixteen years come the end of next August. Win, lose, or draw for reelection, you know, I've been here sixteen years, that's four terms.
Mm-hmm.
That's four election cycles. And you know, it's not a glamorous job, it's not a glorious job. There's plenty of people that says, "Oh, I'd like to be a county commissioner, and I can walk in here, and I'm gonna do really great things." Well, the first thing you gotta do is learn the rules, regulations, and what you're governed by. And you know, that's what I'm trying to e- explain to people right now is, is choose wisely people that can get along with other people. This division's gotta end. The whole commission has got to come together for the betterment of Jefferson County, and not the betterment of a certain group. Special interest has ruled today, and we've got to get away from, we, we gotta represent everybody.
So, for you personally, and I'm, I'm, I guess I'm boiling this down, for you personally, uh, the decision-making, it, it doesn't have to do with whether you think that Fox or Henry, either one are perfect candidates or whatever, it has to do with what the wishes were of, of Dockry who is exiting.
Sure.
And he made those wishes clear.
Sure.
So, and then, of course, I'm sure paramount to you is that District Eight has full representation.
Sure. I, I want to see everybody represented, and that's key.
Right.
That is key. I want everybody that comes to meetings, I reach across the aisle regularly to people with different opinions, and I say, "Okay, let's talk about your opinion versus my opinion, let's find common ground." You can't go to a meeting and not have negotiation on your mind.
Right.
You know, there's a book out there somewhere, The Art of the Deal.
Right.
And you know, you, you, you can't have your mind made up one certain way and, and say, "Well, well, I'm not budging." Well, if everybody in the room's that way, what did you solve? You didn't solve nothing.
So, you think you're gonna get to eleven votes?
Sure.
You're, you're determined to get to eleven votes.
We'll, we'll be voting at twelve o'clock that night. We'll, we'll be voting at twelve o'clock that night. We, we will hit curfew. We are going to, we are going to elect someone to represent District Eight.
All right, that sounds great.
I promise.
And I want to thank you again for coming in and debunking some of these, these myths. I'm sure we will have many, many more. Uh, we try to do this quarterly, because, um, it, it's a lot to unpack when you have these meetings, and there's a lot of, uh, then there becomes a lot of social media involved.
Sure.
Now, I want to, I want to thank, uh, Chairman Carmichael. Congratulations on a, another, another term in your seat.
Thank you.
I guess we're going to say congratulations and not condolences. So, there you go. And we would also like to thank our sponsors, Good Old Boys Golf Carts at four thirty-four Tennessee Highway ninety-two in Dandridge, and Dr. Warren Stinson, one thirteen East Broadway Boulevard in Jefferson City. Be sure to stop by those places and, and, and thank those business owners, because they are determined to make sure that you get accurate information. So, thank you very much. Thank you. We'll see you in the high seat.
I appreciate y'all having me over and buy you a golf cart and ride it over to see Warren.
Yeah, there you go. There you go. Got to support the people who support you.
That's it.
And as I said, thank you very much, and we will see you in the high seat.
And thank the people for being interested to watch us, and I hope we shedded some light.
Oh, I hope so, too. Debunking myths and, and saying truths. Thank you very much.